Hello, Mount Airy, Council President Larry Hushare here. It is June 1st of 2020. And I'd like to call this Town Council Meeting to Order. This meeting is being broadcast live at www.facebook.com on the Town of Mount Airy's Facebook page. And also on Local Channel 23. It can also be viewed at www.carolmediacenter.org. If you have any questions, they may be asked by typing a comment on the Facebook feed. Or you may also send an email to G. Campanelli. G. C. A. M. E. A. N. I. L. E. At Mount Airy spelled out, M.D. dot gov. Okay. We've had two public hearings and we're going to be jumping into the into the meeting after we do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. All right, we have no presentations tonight. We have no speakers tonight. We do have Bob King on screen. He's he's here. He's thinking about doing a community citizen comment later on, so he's just gonna hang out with us. So first on the agenda is the approval of the council meeting minutes and closed minutes. And other related minutes as listed, we have the May 2020 Town Council Meeting Minutes. May 2020 Public Hearing on Ordinance 2020-2 Restaurant I Zone Industrial Zone Minutes. May 2020 Public Hearing on Tax Rate Adoption or FY 2020 slash 2021 Minutes. The May 8 Special Town Council Meeting Minutes. And then the May 15, 2020 Special Town Council Meeting Minutes for Ordinance 2020-17. Be nice if we could pass them all at one time and would anybody be willing to make that motion?
Larry, I'll make the motion to pass all those at the same time.
All right, Councilmember Purrier has made that motion. Is there a second? The Councilmember Washaba has seconded. Is there any discussion? Where did Carl go?
I should be here.
Oh, there you are. Had to work around the screen, so.
Knock on knock on wood, there's no problems yet.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 And that's unanimous. All the minutes are passed. We understand that Chief Reitz is out helping the new seniors who have graduated on the Carroll County side. He's out there working a drive-through with them over in the Nottingham community, so he will not be here tonight. However, we do have Bruce Walls here to give us the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. President. Report for the past month rescue calls. We had 73 in Carroll, 45 in Frederick, four in Howard, and five in Montgomery for a total of 127 calls, rescue calls. Fire calls, 15 in Carroll and five in Frederick for a total of 20, which resulted in 88 calls for service in Carroll, 50 in Frederick, four in Howard, and five in Montgomery for 147 calls for service. Unfortunately, I think everybody has heard that we had to cancel the carnival. That decision was made last week. We were approaching deadlines for things, and so a decision was made to do that. That's unfortunate for our budget, but we'll persevere. I'd like to have everyone try to support us with other activities that we're planning. We are going to have our $4,000 raffle, so that will be a mailing, the usual mailing that we send out around this time of the year. So please look for that in the mail shortly and hopefully participate in that. Also, on June 7th, this coming Sunday, from 12 to 5, we will have the barbecue chicken drive-through at the firehouse. So no need to cook, just come by the firehouse and pick up a barbecue chicken meal and help us out as we try to recover from some of our fundraising losses. And as usual, the station is continuing to handle the situation that we're in. According to all protocols, the station is still limited in access to the public. But if you have any issues, don't hesitate to stop by or contact someone to assist you. And so that concludes my report.
Hey Bruce, just a quick comment. You guys posted a picture of the new truck that started to be built, I believe, finally. And it looks like things are moving along and hopefully, I think, by the end of summer, maybe?
Late summer September is what we've been told. Just like everyone, they've had some problems with COVID at their plant as well as with their suppliers. But things seem to be moving along, and that's the latest information we have.
Fantastic news. Thank you.
Bruce had a comment as well. The carnival. I can't remember the exact numbers that, and I know it depends on the rain and stuff like that. What is the loss in revenue that the fire company will be experiencing because of the carnival cancellation?
Anywhere between 90 to 100,000.
All right, so about 100,000 shortfall. Is that gonna put the fire company in a dire situation at all?
I wouldn't say dire. We have contingency plans. You know, we just have to, like anyone who faces a budget issue, you have to tighten our belt a little here and there and maybe postpone some activities. But there shouldn't be anything that impacts our ability to provide service.
Okay, and and the truck that you're purchasing, is that? How do you pay off a truck like that? Do you guys have that financed or how does that work?
Yes, we have it financed over a period of time with the truck, so that's not a, that's not an issue. And we do get some help from the county on the interest payments, so that's that helps us with that payment.
All right, all right. Well, things get tough at the fire company. All you gotta do is give us a call and we'll figure out something.
Well, we appreciate that. Hopefully, we can all get through this together.
All right, does anyone else have anything for Bruce? All right, thank you so much for showing up this evening.
All righty.
All right, next on the agenda is community concerns and citizen comments. I kind of kind of know that that this is gonna be concerning some of the EDC topics. So I don't want to interrupt anybody from speaking, so I'm gonna say a few words upfront and then let the citizens make their comments at will. And what I'd like to do is just talk about a chronology of the last couple of months, and I'll be as brief as I can. So I know April 22nd was the EDC meeting that occurred without a quorum, but I think that's where grants came up as an issue and was discussed. And and I think that's great. And then on April 28th, the Town Council had a budget workshop. And at that budget workshop, the Town Council went through page by page, and we certainly got down to the Mount Airy Police Department. And we decided as a council that that we would like to see an extra officer on there. And that extra officer comes at a price tag in the first year of $181,000. But we felt like that was very important that we put that in the budget, so we did so. Despite the fact that the general feeling at the meeting was that we were really stretching ourselves by adding that police officer. So it was kind of like, and realized the chief asked for two officers. So, you know, we we managed to get one added in there. But but as that meeting progressed, the indications were that we were we needed to really consider what, you know, putting that extra officer in there. So that kind of bothered a little bit of us and made us feel like we needed to really watch the money as we went down the road because of the expense. We talked a little bit at that meeting as we went through the budget about the EDC budget lines. And we made sure that there was money in there. We did. We did cut a little money back from from one budget line that was in EDC, but still, within the EDC budget, there was $50,000 that was in one budget line, and then there was $25,000. And these were for a loan or a grant program in the next fiscal year. So you're talking about $75,000. And 25,000 of it could be matched by a state grant if we received that grant. So potentially, $100,000 on July 1st that was available for either a loan or a grant program, something like that to help with COVID. So that money was in there, and we knew about it, and we were talking about it. The May 4th council meeting came up, and at that council meeting, there was a budget amendment that was added on to it. It was added on a kind of late, and a grant program was being developed. That grant program actually hit our our emails somewhere about an hour before the council meeting. Okay, I didn't think it was fair to have the council members voting on something that they've barely been able to see. So we actually, in agreement, you know, pulled that off of the agenda with the agreement being that we would have a special council meeting the following Friday. And we did that. On May 8th, we had a special council meeting. And at that council meeting, we were introduced to this grant program. We had a lot of questions on it. It was a very passionate meeting, and it went for quite a while. And what EDC was asking for at that time was $50,000. And the council at that time, based on the fact that this grant program was was so new, and we didn't know how it was gonna work. We had a lot of questions about it, and we almost turned it into a loan program that night and took out the word grant on it. But we didn't do that, and we ended up with a 3-2 vote, not passing the $50,000. And when we left that meeting, which, like I said, it was kind of passionate, we agreed that we would get together the following week and come up with something new. And by Sunday, we were talking, I was talking with Councilwoman Reed. And by Monday, we had something on paper that we all agreed to that would help the downtown businesses. So I know the EDC held a special meeting. It had a quorum. They discussed it. They still wanted the $50,000, which is fine, and and they were really being champions of the small business, so I greatly appreciate it. We came to the meeting. I had asked the town staff how much money was still available in the EDC budget lines, and they said $13,770. And we all agreed that we thought that would get the ball rolling on a grant program. So at that special meeting, which was the shortest council meeting we've ever had, we passed that with no problem and gave $13,770 into the EDC budget line for use as a micro grant for the businesses. So $13,000 was available at that point. And then we waited, and we waited the following week to see a grant program get executed. And then we waited the week after to see a grant program executed, and it wasn't, and that's okay. I know that, you know, everything had to be lined up, but but basically, there were two weeks there. That $13,000 was available and was not used. That took us up to May 27th, where there was an EDC meeting, and in that EDC meeting, it was suggested that the council was trying to hold money back and not approving the $50,000 that they desired. When, in fact, we had $13,000 that was already there, available for use. And we knew that there was a budget amendment that could be introduced tonight as an emergency, and it is being introduced tonight for $16,270. How did we come up with that number or $230? We came up with that number because that's what EDC asked for. Okay, so that's going on tonight as an emergency budget amendment that will take the EDC budget line all the way up to $30,000 to be used for a micro grant program from the town. My understanding is that tomorrow, it goes live for the applications, goes through the 12th, and then the awards can come after that as soon as the board meets and allows that money to be spent. Okay, so that's 30,000, provided that that's passed tonight. That's no guarantee. It needs four out of five council members, and I'm not gonna tie anyone else's hands. So with that, that kind of gets you to July 1st. If the budget passes and nothing else changes on the budget, then we have at least $25,000 in one budget line. We have 50,000 that will become 50,000 if we get the added grant to that. And then the other budget line still has $34,000 in it. That would be available for a a micro loan program, okay? So in total, if you add up the 30,000 that we have now and all the money that we have allocated for next fiscal year that starts on July 1st, four weeks from now, that's $114,000 that we have managed to put into the budget to help with the with the small businesses of Mount Airy. So it gets it gets a little confusing when when we continue to hear an argument that we're not providing $50,000 when, in fact, we budgeted what the EDC Commission suggested, which was $30,000. And we got all this money starting on July 1st. So anyway, it's it's interesting that we've gone down this road where we continuously feel like that we're not providing everything that they want, when in fact, we're giving the EDC Commission what they desire. It's just we're metering it out as opposed to passing it in one $50,000 swoop. So anyway, that's that's my two cents on on what has happened here. And I think we're trying to be fiscally responsible, because as we just heard, the fire company's about to lose $100,000 because their carnival was, you know, was canceled. And we're having to foot the bill for something that that originally wasn't budgeted, which was $181,000 for a new police officer. So I hope the town understands, and I hope the EDC comes to understand that it's not that we're out here saying, no, we're providing all kinds of money. It's just we have to meter it out, and we have to be responsible going into the next fiscal year for the unknowns. In particular, the fire company and and seeing how the police department works out through the next year. So that's my two cents on this. If any other council member would like to make a comment, or maybe we should just allow the citizens to go ahead and speak at this time. Let's say it's, is there another council member who wants to say something? Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Purrier.
All right, thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking the time to at least explain part of this process. I just wanted to clarify, though, some of the details during your speech this evening. At our, I believe, May 8th meeting, it was voted by Councilmember Munder that that we wait until June 1st at this meeting before passing anything. And at that time, it was quickly seconded by Councilwoman Washaba to push it until June as well and and not rush into things. So I just wanted to clarify that detail as well. Some of the things that you had mentioned as you never get on an airplane before you know where you're going and getting all those details. One of your big points was that you wanted it to be vetted through EDC. And tonight, you had just mentioned that EDC, although not having a quorum, did support the necessary funding for the small business grant. As well as some of the budget statements, I want to clarify for the citizens that are watching this evening that when Councilman Hushower mentions quote unquote "council", please understand that not all five members may feel that exact same way. So although we did feel strongly about providing an officer for Chief Reitz, we know that the gentlemen on our force can be overworked, and they do work long hours, and we want to provide. We don't want anyone to get burned out. So all of all five of us did feel very strongly about providing another officer. And but at the same time, we did need to adjust a few things around, but the money that we are taking a look at here tonight essentially was there and just needed to be passed with with the votes. And so I just wanted to to clarify a few of the few of the statements that made it now come to June 1st before we reach a $30,000 mark. The previous $13,770, I felt, was more of a gut punch to our small businesses. And yes, although it did provide something, it was not nearly what could have been done by this council. And I think one of the things that sometimes we tend to forget are the businesses that are not related to the food industry. And those are the businesses that have not been opened. And I am humbled enough to say that I have several small businesses that are located just right down the street from me. Mount Airy Liquors, George's Girls, Upper Deck, all live within one square block of of my house. And some of those businesses are not open. And so when we try to provide funding for them, we need to understand that it's not the food carryout businesses that we are trying to save and persevere. And as I was trying to look at the amount and in which way I was going to vote, I needed to put myself in the business or in the in the shoes of the business that has not been open for two and a half months or three months and say, this council has something that they can do to help me out. And here they are not doing that. And I, for one, know that if I am able to help someone out and I am put into this position to provide that, then that's what I want to do. I want to be able to help them out. And essentially, what has happened is we have pushed this and kicked this down the road longer when this could have been solved. I'm hoping that with tonight's vote, that we can move forward and move past and provide with this small business grant the $30,000 that will help many businesses and business owners, employees, and so on and so forth, not only on Main Street but within the the town limits. And in the next fiscal year, focus more on our on our downtown zone. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Councilman Purrier. Did anyone else want to make a comment at this point? Councilwoman Washaba?
Yes, I want to thank everybody for their comments because I think that it's very important that we clarify our position. I believe when I was listening to the EDC meeting last week, I think there was a lot of concern that at the second special meeting that we had, we just voted and nobody spoke. And so they took that to to mean that their request of $50,000 wasn't even being reviewed seriously. And that, of course, is is not the case, because if you went back to the the previous special meeting, you would see that there was much discussion and much, as you said, passion in that discussion. But but I'd like to, you know, just reiterate a few other things that haven't been addressed yet. One is, I would like to say that, yes, when it comes to the amount of money that we have appropriated for grants slash loans, we are above and beyond any other municipality. I did research today in two municipalities that I I actually called and spoke to people about just to make sure that I was given the right information. One was Brunswick, and the other one was Sykesville. Brunswick actually had, in their budget, they had money left over that they hadn't spent. That is the money that they're currently using for their grant programs. They have 17 to 18 applicants that will be getting grants. So if nobody else applies for their year, they will give $18,000, and they don't have anything going forward. Approve 50,000. They have about 70 businesses that would be able to apply for those loans, or in their case, it's grants. To date, they have 20 to 30 companies or businesses that have applied for those grants. I think what I'm trying to say is, when we were initially asked for $50,000, it was a lot of money that sort of came out of the blue. We were asking for specific information as to what a read of how many businesses we would be able to help. There was discussion with $1,000 now per business, because if we truly want to help businesses, $1,000 probably wasn't gonna make or break whether or not we're going to be able to survive. To date, we still don't know what that number is. In good faith, after that meeting, there, you know, was a lot of discussion, and there was a lot of reaching across both sides to come to next agreement, which was the $13,770. So I I do feel that the council, it's not as though we haven't done anything. We have done things. I and I do want to reiterate that I second that motion for June 1st just because there was a lot of unanswered questions. But within a week, we were able to answer those questions. The EDC had a meeting prior to the May 15 special meeting, and we were able to get a lot of those questions answered. So I think there's been a lot of So I think there's been a lot of work on both sides and I want to thank everybody for that. But at the end of the day, we have to really look forward and see, you know, how many businesses can we? The other thing that hasn't been really discussed here is there was a private fundraiser that was done on Facebook. And I don't know, I think there's somewhere between six to seven thousand in there. So that, I believe, will be grant money that also will be able to be used. So if we approve up to thirty thousand, there's also this private money that also should be used immediately since it's emergency and that should be transparent to everyone. So we can see what the total amount is that has gone out to our businesses. So I just want to say, there's also some issues that I think that perhaps we as a town and maybe some of the small businesses should start looking into. And that is that under the CARES funding, what I learned today was if we give grants out to our small businesses, they in fact should have reimbursable from the CARES Act. It's not happening because both of our counties, Frederick and Carroll County, have decided to disperse that money differently. So they don't want us going to the county to get that money. They want the businesses going directly to the counties. In the case of Frederick County, they have the Jump Start program now. So any of our businesses, and I've been told that letters have been sent to the thirty eight businesses that are located in Frederick County so that they know how to get any kind of additional money from there. So that's great. Side of Carroll County, it's very discouraging because they have nine hundred and fifty million dollars, but they're not allocating any money out. They've decided they're not going to let the municipalities apply for it. In fact, they want to start a program not until August. So if this is truly a need from the businesses, I think we need to get our small businesses writing the county to request as to why that money being held up because it truly is a need for many of these businesses. So with that said, I just want to say that I, as a councilwoman, the reason why I voted the way I did was because I have to look at the big picture. We do have tough decisions to make and everything has to be looked at. And our revenues are going to be decreasing. The following year is when we're really going to see our revenues decreasing. And yet there's still going to be all the needs and even more so that year. So I, in good faith, have to, I can't just keep saying, well, because we didn't spend money, we should go ahead and spend it. Because if we don't spend money, then that money will be put into our savings account to be used for future, future issues and future problems that we're not even counting on. So as a councilwoman, I have to be sure that the taxpayers' money, I want to help the small businesses in any way I can. And I think that we're showing in good faith that we're doing that by allocating the funds in fiscal year 2021. And tonight, I'll go on good saying I'm approval of what they're requesting to get us to the thirty thousand. Plus, as I said, with the private money, they should be close to thirty eight, forty thousand dollars. So I think that's a good start for next, and I think we have good money allocated going forward, so.
All right, thank you. Any other council member comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Reed.
Just a couple of clarifications. So if we go back to the original special meeting on May eighth, Patty, I think the example that you just gave was Brunswick or what was he? What was the town?
Brunswick, yeah, I just spoke to the Brunswick administrator.
So basically, they are giving a grant program and based on the information that you just stated, they went through their budget and found unspent money, which if you go back to that original special meeting, is what I suggested, including the original thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy from EDC as well as other budget lines to get us to that fifty thousand. So I just, I want to make it clear that the original suggestion was to use that unspent money in that original special hearing, just so that we're clear on that. The other thing is that the private fundraiser is just that. It is a private fundraiser by community citizens, including myself. It will be fully transparent, but we as council should not consider that when we're considering what we, the town, are doing for our businesses. That is completely separate. It is a private fundraiser donated from members of the community. It is one hundred and ten percent transparent. It will be, it opened today. Actually, it mirrored, I plan to talk about it later, so I don't want to go into it. But, but yes, and quite honestly, we have about eighty four hundred dollars so far, which we're quite proud of because our community came together. But again, what we're talking about is what we, the town, are going to do for the businesses, not what community citizens have done for the businesses.
Say one thing, I just want to say that, yes, you're correct. When you actually had asked for the fifty thousand dollars on behalf of EDC or actually you were really asking for it yourself because of the time there wasn't a quorum.
Right.
The thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars that I stated that we later approved was, that came from EDC that hadn't been spent.
Right, but that was brought up. I just want clarification so that we're all on the same page. That was, that was mentioned at the special, the original special meeting on May eighth.
Right, so my analogy was that what they're pulling from right now, Brunswick, is just that, that eighteen thousand dollars is coming from their EDC line. Secondly, regarding the private fundraiser, I didn't want to make any any interpretation that we had anything to do with that. You're absolutely right, it was private, but at the end of the day, that's money that will be allocated to help our businesses. So I want to make that clear to everybody that there is additional funding because generous donors.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Councilwoman Reed?
No, I'm good.
And Councilmember Munder?
Yeah, I would just like to say that you all have said my points much more eloquently than I could have done. So I second pretty much what everyone has said. It is not that, I'm glad that we have taken the time. We took the extra week to begin with to get the ducks in a row, to get everything going properly. We are doing much more than a lot of other municipalities are in the state and we do have to look at the big, long-term picture in the end for everybody in town. So that's why I did what I did and suggested, at least wait to June. But so that everybody worked through their differences. We had another meeting a week later. We at least got some funding ready, ready to go once the program gets up and running. So I appreciate all the help that people have done on that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. We did go a little bit off script. I apologize for that, but I wanted to make sure that we were able to take public comments and not end up in a situation where we're picking at the public for making comments. So we kind of got our words out there upfront. I think that, I don't know if Bob has anything that he wanted to say. I think this is the portion of the meeting he was sticking around for. Former Councilman King, did you have any comments you wanted to say?
Yeah, Larry, I've been sitting here debating and debating whether I should. And I think I'm going to, okay, the host has asked you to start your video. Is that right there?
There you are. Go for it.
Living color. I am going to make a few comments here. I'm sure all of you, I've prepared a statement and I'm hoping that all of you have it. And so I'm going to start here. I've watched with interest discussions that have taken place concerning the proposal to find some kind of loan or grant process to assist many of our small businesses to reopen after the mandatory shutdown of March the twenty third, twenty twenty. I want to make sure that everybody understands these businesses did not want to go out of business. They did not want to shut their doors. They were forced to by our state authorities here. And I'm happy as can be with that because I think Larry Hoagard turned out to be a hell of a leader during this. The original and desired program would have been fifty grant awards of a thousand dollars each totaling fifty thousand dollars. The grants could be used for just about anything, any reason that these businesses needed. They would determine how they would use their money. At this point in the requested town council, there were reasons is where the reasons and the purpose got mixed up. Okay, and one of the, one of the largest mix up was the fact that this fifty thousand dollar grant process was going to be a stimulus. It was, it was not about anybody fixing their windows or new cash registers or being able to keep help. It was about getting some money out there. It's very similar to the twelve hundred dollars that each of you got and five thousand dollars for your five thousand dollars for your kids and all that kind of stuff. That's a stimulus. There's, you know, there's not going to be any accounting of it later on. It's, there's no taxes on it. You're not being charged for it. It doesn't go on your tax forms anywhere. So it's to act as a stimulus. That's what the money was originally for. Let's see, adding fifty thousand dollars into our little, little base of forty stores or forty businesses. And Jason points out, they're not all food stores. Machine shops, back on back acre circle, you know, there's a whole bunch of different kinds of businesses. And Larry, I know you guys know this is true. I am not Mr. Emergency for seven years. That I served as a voting member of this council was damn hard to get. An emergency past my lips, this is an emergency. This worldwide pandemic is an emergency and these businesses were shut down by the government, not vice versa. They weren't shut down because they weren't doing their job. So although I'm Mr. Anti-Emergency, I think you have an emergency here. I'm not sure that if you wait another, another month from June the first today to July the first, a month from now, I'm not sure if you're not going to lose ten or twelve of these businesses. And that's a substantial amount of them. Let's see, and you, there's all kinds of interesting alternatives that were offered that we could work on this year. It just doesn't fit this month here. You know, you really have to pay attention to that. Ten years ago, this town had a very, very bad reputation with businesses. Okay, people like Don Murray Needle, Ray Miller, Pam, myself, we have worked diligently to make Mount Airy a business-friendly community. So, and I think we've come a long, long ways and the people coming up behind us also have, they're getting on with this. Okay, and then I want to talk a little bit about these particular small businesses. Over the past eight years, these businesses were major in our support for the Rail to Trails project. They showed up with help, they showed up with money, they showed up with all the right things at all the right time. And you deserve kudos for that, Larry. You put it all together. When I was the boss in Parks and Recs, we were not going to drop trees on each other out doing the Rails to Trails and I wouldn't let us do it. You took it over, you got it done. Kudos to you. Okay, but at your side was these same small businesses that are now in jeopardy. Okay, well, they didn't only do Rails to Trails. They rehabilitated a caboose. Okay, and this, well, and this is a partnership between us and the county governments and, and some of the small businesses, but once again, mostly you. Okay, so we rehabbed the caboose. Then we found out that we needed all somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars to put a pad up to set this thing on. And about that time, we figured, well, we need a roof to put over top of it so it doesn't get wet because, you know, the snow leaks in and it's supposed to. That's just the way they were built. So at each of these grand openings that I tended and got to hold on to the big pair of scissors and didn't get my fingers cut off by the mayor, we thanked these small businesses and we said to them, if you ever need anything, you call me. Well, I think they need us and they need us now. Okay, and so I really, I really urge, I urge you guys to sit down and look and try to get as much money as you can right now, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, rolling into those businesses before they go out of business. It's not an unusual request. We changed the budget in the last month all the time so that we don't have to, we don't have to let money go that we fought hard for last year. And I'm, well, I just would, I would like to see you guys act immediately. Act tonight. This fifty thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket. I don't know how, how large the budget is this year, but I almost feel that we can't afford not to do it as opposed to do it. Whatever it takes to get fifty thousand dollars out there right now.
Okay, all right, thank you so much for your comments and we're.
If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them. It's not really a question-packed type of question, but you know.
I think we're going to get, you know, hopefully tonight we'll get EDC what they asked for at the Wednesday meeting, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
And now she's going to make me disappear. And you've been trying it for years, Larry.
No, not at all.
I know.
Not on the golf course.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate, appreciate the time.
All right, is Donna Marie, is she still out there? And would she like to speak?
I'm sorry, did you say Donna Marie?
Yeah, is she out there and would she like to speak?
She just submitted her letter for us to read.
Oh, okay, all right. Did you want to read it? Is that, is that what she wanted?
Yes.
So, okay. Are you the reader of the evening?
I guess I will be. So I shared the screen with her letter, so I'll go ahead and read it, but you can follow along.
Yeah, if you get tired, let me know and I'll jump in.
Okay. Mayor Rockingburg, Town Council, Town Staff, and fellow town residents. I am writing today as a Chair of EDC, but also as a town resident of twenty-four years. On March twelfth, we entered a state of emergency due to COVID nineteen, something we could never see coming or be prepared for. Businesses were forced to close their doors through no fault of their own. Restaurants could only provide carryout and deliveries. Nearly three months later, our businesses are now just able to open at fifty percent capacity. But the struggle will still continue as they try and make up for lost income with partial income. Our business survey taken at the end of March shows many businesses not lasting more than three to five months and some even less. Today, many of our businesses could be just weeks away from potentially closing their doors forever. Some of our truly smaller businesses have fallen through the cracks and are unable to get federal, state, or county assistance. That is why our local government is so important right now. Our leaders were elected to make the hard decisions needed to protect the livelihood of our community and its future. Elected officials must understand that this is not the time to slow things down. Yet it is a time to think and act decisively as time is of the essence. Without a downtown, without our business community beyond downtown, our town will no longer be viable. Think about the entire picture and also think about the common sense approach that is being recommended, utilizing the unused twenty twenty budgeted funds. Economic Development Commission formed a committee as a result of our regular April twenty-second meeting that included many leaders throughout our community, including Kelly Patrick, President of Manza, Nicole Enoz, President of the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce, Pamela Reed, Town Councilwoman, Sean Groton, EDC Member, Donna Marie Needle, Chair of EDC, Melissa Thorne, Economic Development Manager and Main Street Manager, and Charlene Singleton, Senior Accounting Clerk and Customer Service Manager. Our purpose was to create, if you can go down here, to create a micro grant to assist our businesses through this very difficult time. As we brainstormed, it was acknowledged that in this town of Mount Airy, our budgets do not roll over. Any budget surplus at the end of the year simply evaporates unless a budget amendment is brought forth to reallocate the funds to a different department or for a different purpose. Therefore, we knew that the town had a budget surplus from events and programs being canceled due to COVID nineteen. It is for this reason that EDC held an emergency meeting on May thirteenth and made a recommendation to the Town Council to reallocate fifty thousand from unused funds in the twenty twenty budget to a business micro grant for a business. To a business micro grant for businesses in need. We recommend that EDC be the first to contribute an extra thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy in our budget. And that the council looked deep into the rest of this year's budget to find the rest. Unfortunately, at its emergency meeting of May fifteenth, the town council would only reallocate the thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy from EDC to a micro grant. And there was no further discussion of any additional funds that could be allocated to the micro grant. Next page here. As the EDC Chair, Commission Chair, I was and still am deeply disappointed the council members did not discuss the entire recommendation that was voted on and agreed unanimously. Unanimously by our commission. The council's unwillingness to discuss this very real and urgent matter further exemplifies to our business community that during this time of need. They are not a priority to this ca- this council. This may not be the case, but this is the way it looks to our businesses. As a town resident and local real estate agent, I am disappointed in the lack of urgency. Closed and boarded up businesses don't just impact the business community, they impact the entire community. Other businesses will think twice about bringing their business to Mount area in the future and may elect to open up shop elsewhere. We have already watched as the bank building sits on the corner, literally about to crumble for over a decade. Miracles across the street sits empty for the better part of three years now. And the building behind McDonald's greets people coming in town with its nearly zero occupancy for close to a decade. Not to mention the health for business community also impacts residential values. It comes full circle. We are literally in the driving seat as a town with a very healthy balance sheet, six times the recommended reserves and residents who want nothing more than to support our businesses. And for their elected fisher, officials to do the right thing. This is why at our EDC meeting of May twenty seventh, our commission went back to the drawing board. Our elected town officials must be convinced to take further action under these dire circumstances. And so we brought forth two additional recommendations. As a result of our efforts, I'm told that there will be a budget amendment for sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars of the EDC budget. For fiscal year twenty twenty one. Be reallocated to twenty twenty and added to the micro grant to make a total of thirty thousand available. I am thankful and appreciative for that. However, the recommendation for the reallocation of the current year surplus in the amount of twenty thousand. To make the total of fifty thousand for our businesses, I'm afraid will once again fall through the cracks and not be discussed. Therefore, as the EDC Chair and as a resident, I am asking the town council mayor to acknowledge the recommendation put forth by EDC. Please discuss the following budget surplus item, line items and let us know where these funds are now being spent. If not this year, will they evaporate? And why would we not look at these surpluses as a means to further support our business community? And she lists um, several line items, um, general government salaries twenty two thousand. MML convention expenses at thirty two thousand seven hundred and seventy five. Due to meetings at four thousand, office supplies and equipment, five thousand. General and admin expenses, eleven thousand four hundred. Community development salaries at nine thousand with a total of sixty five thousand one hundred and seventy five. In closing, we know our businesses are the backbone of our community. They are always there for us. When we look, our, when we ask our businesses to support our local events, they always come through. When we ask our businesses to support projects such as rails to trails, the rail yard or the caboose project, they always come through. When we ask our businesses to support our youth sports organizations, high school sports, events, drama and band fundraisers, they always come through. Our business owners are involved in our civic organizations that support local scholarship funds, community events and so much more. Our businesses are there when we need them. Now it is time for us to be there for them. Thank you for considering my concerns. Donna Marie Needle.
All right, uh, thank you. For reading that. I think we've all, um. You know, certainly heard that, absorbed it and uh. You know, and are willing to act on it. So, um, you know, so that's a good thing. I appreciate their comments is. Are, are there any other comments that had come in uh? On Facebook feed or uh, any other emails, anything like that?
There are several on Facebook that are significant and should be shared if you would like me to read them.
Uh, yeah, go ahead and read, uh, read them. We, we'll, we'll go about, you know, no more than five more minutes on this.
Okay, um, from Dixon Watson, he asked, to be clear, is thirty thousand appropriated if twenty twenty nineteen? If twenty twenty dash nineteen is passed from fiscal year twenty twenty funds? And eighty four thousand is a fiscal year twenty twenty one funds? For a total of a hundred and fourteen thousand, if you pass the budget and you get the matching twenty five thousand matching funds. I'm not sure if you want me to pause.
Yeah, um. Going to have to, we're, I'll just reread the uh, the numbers. For FY twenty one, I think, think that'll get them. In FY twenty one, there's line fifty two twelve that has, that applies to the downtown zone. That's twenty five thousand dollars uh, that is in there. And there is a state grant that could pick that all the way up to fifty thousand dollars. Okay, so it's a solid twenty five and potentially a fifty. And then you get over to line fifty two ten. And that's the one that applies to uh, all the businesses all over town. And that one, uh, I believe is budgeted at fifty thousand dollars. And whatever money, money we budget tonight will come off of that. It will come out of that money and move to this fiscal year. So sixteen thousand two hundred thirty will be taken from that budget line and moved to this year's uh, budget. Okay. Uh, now to, to make that happen, they're actually going to, for Donna Marie's uh, letter, they're actually going to the in. Employee salary line and pulling that money from there, which I think is also something that. Councilwoman Reed had brought up um, at the very first meeting was looking. So we're actually looking beyond the EDC budget. So I, I think that may answer. If, if not, he'll probably email me. A- any other comments?
Yes, Donna Marie Needle also commented. It is EDC's responsibility to recommend not to carry out the grant. Once approved, the staff and council needed to get in gear to, to get that thirteen thousand out to businesses. I don't think it was EDC's responsibility to oversee the execution. Do you, Larry? Whose responsibility is it? So that was earlier on, might be a. Little delay.
You know, that's a fair question, uh, and I don't have the answer other than the fact that. Uh, it's uh, Councilwoman Reed, would you like to address it?
Yeah, only that there has been a lot of behind the scenes work. I mean, we haven't been sitting around for two weeks doing nothing. Town staff has actually been working very hard to get the details of the grant finalized. Mayor Pat has had some input. Um, so quite honestly. The very fact that, you know, what, what date did we approve the thirteen um? May eighteenth and the very fact that the grant is going live on June first. It's actually. Pretty, pretty impressive. So, so town staff has been working hard. Um, along with myself, Mayor Pat and some other people to make that happen. I mean. You know, we, we have to ensure that the application process is fair, that the application itself is accurate. Um, that the criteria is correct. So, you, you know, there's a lot of dotting i's and crosses, crossing t's. Um, so I'm impressed that from May eighteenth to June first, we got it done.
Fair enough. Uh, any other comments?
Yes, Karen Hildebrand. Commented that Spotlight Musical Theater has been closed since March twelfth. We are now being forced to close our summer camp program as well. Keith Ankerwitz commented, commented, every penny helps. Great that there is EDC under it, but time is of the essence. Um, and Hildebrand commented, um. She said, thank you for bringing that to the attention, Councilmember Poyer. Um, Donna Marie made another comment out of the blue. Question mark, this was never out of the blue. I was told straight up from Joanne Sap that she would gladly use a thousand dollars to pay her electric bill. Brunch, using money left over that they didn't spend. There's a novel idea. We have sixty five thousand left over that we didn't spend. What about that? Yes.
If it's a straight comment, I don't mind listening, but if it's just general batter. Back and forth on Facebook, try to be a smart ass, part of my language, a smart comment. Don't read them, in my opinion. Because it's just going to delay the process.
All right, uh, I, I believe that we have gotten to the point where, you know, we do understand that the small businesses want us to take action, so let's. Let's move on and take some action. How's that sound? So. All right. So we'll, we'll call that the end of the uh, citizen comment. And community concern section of this and we'll move into the ordinances and. Um, I alerted the council, I'll let, alert the citizens now that uh, that we are going to. From the agenda, we're actually gonna, gonna move the ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen, emergency budget amendment. Uh, for sixteen thousand two hundred thirty, we're gonna move that to the top. And then we're gonna move MXD down to the bottom because I think we're gonna get engaged in quite a good. Kind of been a conversation about MXD. So we'll, we'll try to knock everything out and that way if, if people want to move on. Uh, because it's not, not an issue they're concerned about, they'll be able to do it. So, um, with that, we have ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen, emergency budget amendment to add sixteen thousand two hundred thirty. To the general fund for small business operating assistance micro grant program. That's for adoption as an emergency. Would someone like to make that motion?
Um, make a motion to move it in.
Okay, Councilwoman Reed has uh, recommended. I'm sorry, has uh, made a motion to uh. Is a motion to uh, approve that one? I'll second it. Okay, or move it in, that's, that's fine. Okay, and Councilmember Poyer has seconded that and now we're down to discussion. And uh.
I have one comment, um, not necessarily a comment. Um, but, but based on the discussion that we all just had, um, and the comments that we heard. Um. Is anyone open to adjust? What the budget amendment is currently written for?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman in Washoe.
Okay.
And I, I did hear you, Jason. I believe you said.
Yep, no worries, no worries.
Okay, so I, I do have a thought about Pam because I have that. It's something that is, you know, very much needed and we want to try to get this in uh, quickly. Um, enough time has passed, but I was wondering if we could do it this way because. My research has sort of demonstrated that how much they thought they were going to need, they, they didn't use. So since we're taking from fiscal year twenty twenty one, I want to make sure you're whole in twenty twenty one. If you need it, okay? So I was thinking if we approved enough to get into thirty K. And if, after you open up the uh, application process. And you see that it's go exceed the thirty K and go to say forty five K. Then we could do immediately an executive budget amendment for that amount. Take that from the, you know, fiscal year twenty twenty one. And, and that, that way you'd be, you'd get the money right. We would have a special meeting, but all agree, we'll have official meeting right away. We prove it. And then rubber stamp it and then you would have that. But if you don't get the amount of applicants that you think you might. And you still have all this money left over for next year. If and when there's going to be another outbreak of COVID nineteen or. If you feel as though you should be, you know, offering those, those grants in the future.
So my only question to that being, I appreciate the compromise, Patty. I actually, I do like that idea of my. One of my concerns is we, we overload the grant right now and we actually have to spend it by the end of. The fiscal year, meaning by June. So if we have thirty thousand dollars, but we only get eighteen applications. We lose the rest. It doesn't roll over.
Right.
I actually see the reasoning behind that. But what I would ask is that you not. How do I say this? So, so basically that leaves us. Um. What, thirty two thousand in the EDC budget? By moving the sixteen or somewhere around there or thirty seven? I can't remember what the actual number is. I can't do math right now.
Yeah, and what, one of the other things that has happened is that. You know, originally that was going to be a loan. Now we're saying it's going to be a grant. So I, I think that's been a good compromise. From those of us who are hoping for loans.
So what, so obviously you're, you can't, you and I can't speak for the rest. Um. But what you're saying is you would be potentially willing, if the need were there, to take the remaining money that we have. Which is going to be listed as a loan. You are willing on an emergency basis to, to change that to a grant. If needed.
But what I'm saying is then you, then we know what we're dealing with. We're going to know how many applicants. Actually meet the criteria and actually need it in fiscal year. They need it this month.
So, not, not the full amount, but, but what you're saying is you're open to at least that. Because, because originally we had talked about, is it fifty two twelve, Larry? Um, being a loan, but, but if, if this grant generates the need when we get to July one. We, we could potentially move that over to this grant program, not a loan.
Right.
Is, I'm just, I'm just clarifying so I understand.
I want to speak for Patty. I think I, I know what she's suggesting. So, so Patty, if I say it wrong, by all means. Uh, chime in. I think what she's saying is that. Uh, your window is open, as I saw it from, now it's opening tomorrow morning or after this meeting through the twelfth. Okay, that the town's. Application window is opening. So on the twelfth.
Oh.
Uh, the board is going to meet and determine who's really qualified and who gets the money. You may have twenty applications, you may have fifty applications. We, we don't know. Okay, if you have fifty applications, I think what Patty is suggesting. Is that we have a, another special council meeting. Uh, as long as three of us are in agreement with that. And, and we actually do another budget ordinance that kind of goes back to that little window that um. Uh, that Donna Marie had put up there. And we're able to pull that money and actually stick it into the grant program to help the remaining businesses. To plus up that thirty thousand. And as far as I'm concerned, and this may be where it's getting a little confused. The budget's getting passed tonight. I'm not going to worry about next year's fiscal year budget after tonight. So if we're able to take some money from the, you know, the salaries and MML costs, I mean. To finish out the fiscal year, then I'm, I'm willing to do that at a special meeting.
Well, so that. Right, that would be my only concern is if, you know, after the twelfth, if we have another special meeting to. For another budget amendment, that it would be pulled again from next year's budget into this year's budget, which is kind of what we're doing now.
Tonight, we're doing that. If we have to plus it up somewhere after June twelfth. As far as I'm concerned, the budget was passed, the window is closed on, on altering next year's fiscal year budget. And we'll go and look at, at the MML money and the rest of the salary money and stuff like that. And just, just go ahead and get us the rest of the way through your, your grant program.
So.
Is that fair, Patty?
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, I, so I understand the need to do that and it actually, in my opinion, protects EDC. Um, that we don't lose a bunch of money. Um, so if, if we can all agree to that, that. A- after the twelfth, when we get to that evaluation period, um, we make. A very quick decision if we need some more funding, um, and we have that meeting.
Yeah, uh, um, since we have our town attorney on here, Tom, uh. Any, anything in that conversation seem too far out of sorts?
No, I mean. Uh, not, no, there was nothing that I heard that would not be lawful or inconsistent with a charter.
All right, so. So my feeling is that, um, you know, the motion that you presented for the sixteen thousand two hundred thirty, seconded by Jason. You know, I recommend that we, we act on that and uh, and get that money appropriated. And then if you need more money after June twelfth, then uh, you know, Patty's, Patty's your first phone call. So, and, and what we have to do to, to finish it out. Um, or any other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I just have a question that's not necessarily highlighted and might be part of the process, which is completely fine. I'm here to, to make sure that money is where it needs to be and not necessarily completely understand every, every little. Um. Corner along the process, but if, let's say during this window between June first and June twelfth, fifteen businesses. Apply and. Apply and those fifteen businesses all meet the criteria. Out of that thirty thousand. Is it the intention that we, we take whatever is in that thirty thousand and divvy that up? And give it to the fifteen businesses so that, you know, I used it as an even number, so that each of those businesses would get two thousand? Or if, um, you notice that, hey, we have thirty businesses apply and all thirty of those businesses. Um, meet the, meet the requirements, that each them business gets a thousand dollars. Uh, what, what's sort of the, the guidelines there, if you can add some clarification, please?
So I, I can clarify in that the grant is written and was approved by town council. That it would be distributed in increments of a thousand dollars. Um, so currently as it stands, if we get fifteen applicants. And we distribute fifteen thousand dollars. E D C would lose the additional fifteen thousand from the budget, and I, that's kind of a, a risk we're taking. I, I don't know if it's a risk, or, um, we know that. There are more than thirty businesses that qualify and are in need, um, but that is the reality of it. If we get fifteen applications, we lose fifteen.
Thank you for clarifying.
Right, right, Larry, I mean.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's the way I understand it, and, uh, and the way, you know, I would expect it to work. And we'll just, you know, we honestly don't know, uh, we know we got like four hundred businesses in town, but we don't know of those. How many we have that, you know, have less than fifteen full-time employees and et cetera, et cetera, so, yeah. Uh, a- any other comments? We ready to vote on this? This does require a four-person, uh, uh, eyes, four eyes to, uh, pass. So, uh, all in favor of ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen, say aye.
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 Okay, that's five, so there's another sixteen thousand two hundred thirty, so you got thirty, thirty to run with E D C. And, uh, if you need more, it sounds like you can come back, so congratulations on that. All right, uh, next on the list is twenty, ordinance twenty twenty dash four, that's the, uh. Uh, neighborhood professional district proposed text amendment that is here for reintroduction. And to set a public hearing, so I'll make a motion to reintroduce. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Munder, seconds, and, uh, I guess we'll go for seven fifteen before the July meeting, does that sound okay? Okay, hearing, nobody complain, I think that we are good to go on that. And, uh, next is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen. And that is to adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one. And this is up for adoption, uh, do we have a motion to approve the budget with the, uh, adjustments that were put in there? On the E D C line, uh, today?
I'll make a motion.
Jason, uh, council, councilmember Poirier has made a motion to approve, uh, is there a second?
I'll say, oh, look. I'll second that.
Munder has seconded, are there any added comments on this ordinance? All right, uh, the only note that I'll make in there is, uh, like I said, we did, uh. Uh, add an extra officer in there at, to the tune of a hundred eighty one thousand dollars in the first year, and I wanted to compliment. Uh, the chief and the Mount Airy Police Department for actually going back over their budget. Uh, it's not a lot of money, but they squeezed another five thousand out, so I really appreciate them, uh. At least making the effort and realizing that we went to bat for them, and, uh, and I think it's gonna be great to have. That eleventh officer on the force. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 And none opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous, the budget is passed for next fiscal year. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen, that's to extend the expiration dates for special exceptions. That's for, uh. Introduction and, uh, is this one not an emergency?
Is it not, uh, the state code requires that we have a hearing on this.
Okay.
This is amendment, so it'd be for referral to the planning commission, but I would, uh, ask, given the time sensitivity to it. That you set the hearing now.
Okay.
Planning, you're set to go with a hearing on July first.
Okay, all right, so, so we'll refer this to planning and, um. And then we'll set the, uh, public hearing, let's see, first, I guess we gotta introduce it, so I'll move to introduce. There a second on that, Councilmember Poirier, seconds, uh, public hearing, seven o'clock before the July meeting, sound good? Okay, so that'll be the public hearing, and we will refer this to the planning commission at this time. And expect it to, expect to see it again next month. Uh, I see John Breeding on there, does this, is there, doesn't this concern a specific property?
It does, and that's related to Wildwood, the final section, I think it's section seven, uh, the owner of that property is, uh, presenting a, um. He's going through the process to try to, um, get his plan completed and approved through Carroll County Stormwater Management and all the other approvals. So it is still in process, I was reached out by an attorney a month or so ago and, and trying to make sure we're staying on top of that, so it doesn't get lost in the weeds. Um, so, yeah, it is specific to that, and maybe it's, maybe, uh. I'll have to talk to Tom about that later, uh, but we, I, I think we can work through this. I'll put it on the objective for this month and, uh, see if we can get a, a resolution through them.
All right, thank you. So if you're a Wildwood, uh, resident who is watching this, you may wanna stay tuned to that ordinance, cuz it may have an impact. On, um, your community. Okay, so, uh, the last one on here is ordinance twenty twenty dash one, that's the mixed-use development. It is for adoption, uh, this is the last ordinance that I have on for tonight. And, uh, would someone like to move, um, on the M X D ordinance?
Larry, I'll move, sorry Pam.
That's all right, Councilmember Poirier has moved on that motion and, um, who's a second? Okay, uh, Councilmember Reed has seconded, and now we're into discussion. And, uh, we'll just go around the horn, so if someone sticks a pin up, I'll, uh, uh, call you up, and you can talk.
I mean, can we just, unfortunately, I mean, I know we had a meeting, uh, earlier in the day with staff on this. But it seems to have been mix-up and copies that I was, we were reviewing. Unfortunately, can we just go over page by page, if we have any changes, is that okay, Tom? Cuz it seems to have been. One thing I'm looking at was not included in this final version that we got later to look at. And most of my questions have been answered, so I won't be, you know, going over line by line, word for word, as I normally do. But just so that we all are reading from the same page on this, not to draw this out.
I mean, there, there may be a real question of, uh, cuz I'm not, you know, everybody's been hitting print on their own printers, there's no guarantee the copy I got is your.
Yeah, I know, um.
So we can go page by page, but, um.
All right, well, let me, sorry, President, let me try and hurry it up then, I'll go by what. Tom sent around about three o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, just give, give me one second before you, uh.
Yeah.
Through there, did, uh, Councilmember Washabaugh or, or, uh, Poirier or Reed, did you have anything you just wanna say in general before we? Start paging through this thing?
Only that Carl and I met with town staff today, um. I'm gonna let Carl kind of go through what we talked about, it was actually incredibly productive. Um, Carl is, I, I'll just follow through with the notes, um. And kind of flip through it with you, just to make sure that we don't miss anything.
Oh, that's fine, cuz, yeah, that's fine, cuz I was reading this over the, what was sent earl- later, right before the meeting, so I might need the help. I will need the help on the notes.
Okay, I'm gonna mute myself, Carl, and you have the, uh, you have the pace.
All right, so, okay. On this copy of what Tom sent around, I take it that on page three. Uh, I guess down under looks like I paragraph two needs to stay in because it's in existing code, is that the way?
Yes, so, uh. What happened there was that initially, as introduced. The M X D was gonna have a percentage of open space. Uh, upon, um. The, uh, let me get that right, uh, the. Uh, as a percentage of the net developable acreage, just like. The current categories in the current table and the current conservation R one, et cetera. Went into the, a- and so currently, right under that table, and for those items that are currently in the code. There's a provision that says that there can be a request for adjustment, basically, that the planning commission can. You know, based on the unique features of a parcel or whatever, adjust those percentages. Uh, so, at the planning commission, uh, it was ultimately decided to treat M X D differently. To basically, uh, calculate its, uh, ten percent. Uh, for open space on not the net developable acreage, but rather on the total gross acreage of the project. Uh, so, all that's happening here is, is in subsection one. We are insert, taking out what it says now and inserting the open space requirement for developments in M X D. Shall be ten percent of the total gross acreage of the project. And then taking what was in thi- this right to adjust or ability to adjust percentages. And moving it to paragraph two. Uh, I did ask whether the planning commission wanted, um, to, uh. Have the ability to make adjustment, or was recommending that it have the ability to make adjustments. Um, to M X D as well, and the answer was yes, uh, so. Hence, the language was slightly changed a little bit, so that it allows an adjustment to not only the categories that are already in the code, in the table. Also, uh, mixed use, which is calculated a slightly different way.
All right.
Long ex, lawyerly explanation for all that.
All right.
All right.
No problem. I guess on page four, under section ninety eight dash sixty one, under the pattern book.
Uh, for, uh, give me just a second, I wanna make sure I understand, you're, you're talking about, uh. It was page three up at the top where that sub one was all lined out. And then changed to the open space requirement for developments in mixed-use district. Shall be ten percent of the total gross acreage of the project, is that?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then right below it, um, we're just moving basically the current language of the code. Down one subsection, and now we're also adding a little, M X D. To the list of things they could adjust under their recommendation here.
Okay.
And then on page four, under section ninety eight dash sixty one. Paragraph B, it starts talking about, the town council has final approval of the pattern book, which I know. Council President Hushour and Councilwoman Washabaugh. Was talking about, but my question relates to the, what's mentioned later. In it is like a final pattern book, does that cover everything, the preliminary and the final?
I'm sorry, where's the final?
Hold on, that's further down.
So Carl, you're on page four B, right?
Yes.
The only thing that we had talked about there was that instead of approved by the commission, it was approved by town council.
Yeah, which is fine, but I think later on. Word in that wasn't, wasn't in the version we were going off of this afternoon, was put back in. By accident, so it's kind of like, I'm trying to get everything, all the thoughts together on multiple ver- versions.
Yeah, so this was not a recommendation of the planning commission, this is the recommendation of one or more council. Members in their meetings with staff. So that's why in this third version, I'll call it. You see it in blue there, hopefully it's in blue on your screen, I understand that may change from screen to screen, but. Should be a different color than the other red lines, which, uh, originally showed, you know, just the planning commission recommendations.
Yeah.
Um, I think this is probably put in here as a placeholder, uh, and. Probably signals to me and us. You know, what the overall intent here is to do. But I'd probably recommend that I go through the rest of this draft, just as Carl's alluding to, to make sure there's not some later reference.
Yeah.
Contradicts this, so I think this is probably not final language, but more or less kind of like a placeholder. To say, hey, this, we wanna have this concept. Uh, and, uh, you know, to, to, to work on the wording a- and the rest of the statute as needed.
All right, so, yeah, cuz it is something that contradicts it later, but I can get to that.
Yeah. Yep.
If I can jump in for a second.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, the reason why that was important, um, to, I, I sat in on a meeting with staff with, uh, Councilwoman Washabaugh. And, um, this M X D is, is a, a very important document for the town. And, and basically it's our pathway to getting Center Street, uh, eventually through, as well as a couple of other properties that it could apply to, but, uh. Uh, but it is so important that we get it right, and what we wanted to do is have the town council. A, a body of elected officials that are accountable to the people, uh, have some input somewhere in M, M X D. And, and by doing it at the pattern book stage. We're able to get in there before the developer is out there throwing out all kinds of money on plans and everything. If, if we on the council approved the, uh, the pattern book. And then let the planning commission handle the rest of it, at least the council. Has been able to make a decision on something that could fundamentally change, um, change the environment of the whole town. So, uh, so that's why we asked for that, to be put in.
Just, uh, I'm sorry, I may have mentioned this to Councilwoman Washabaugh, that there is one legal issue to this, and that is that. Under our town code and also under our state code. If a planning commission is created, it's assigned certain duties. And of course, town council, separate set of duties. And I wanna make sure, and I haven't had a chance to look at it today, that. Uh, what's being proposed is, does not somehow run afoul of, uh, particularly the state code. Uh, and or would not require other revisions to other parts of the town code. Uh, that probably currently say, the planning commission reviews and i- is empowered to. Uh, vote on, um, development plans, and then the pattern book is probably one part. A planning document for a particular development, so, uh, just with that caution, I, I wanted to throw that issue out there.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna, as I, as Council President Hushaw said, I just wanna get it right too. Since I don't wanna be revisiting this over and over again, and if we need to change sections of code, then do it. One foul swoop.
So, Tom, that is something that you're looking into?
Yes, uh, I, I, um, I would, uh. Propose, uh, looking into that, uh, in the next five days or so, uh. And getting back to everybody by email, uh, letting in what my thoughts are. And, uh, my sense is you can do it, I, I just wanna make doubly sure we're not violating something in the state code or. Or don't need to change other parts of our town, but.
Yeah, cuz the last thing I want is to say something and someone can over, overturn it on appeal or something, so.
Right.
Um, okay, we can go to page seven. Under D two approval, can we change under the planning commission may require charrettes of special work? Does anybody have a strong feeling if we change that to shall, because May kind of says they can or cannot, I would rather. Have at least one meeting, public meeting on, so public can put an input or is that handled later? In the process of this.
What number is that, Carl?
Yeah, I don't see where you're talking.
D two. It says the planning commission may require charrettes of special work sessions sessions. To facilitate collaboration. Can we change that made a shall?
That's my page six.
Okay. So I'm going about what Thompson around this afternoon, Jason.
Yeah, so am I.
Okay, really, okay. Alright.
So you want instead of May, you want shall, the planning commission.
Yeah, or is that, my concern is that people will come back and say, well, we never got the chance to. Look at something preliminary, or is that concern handled somewhere else? In their approval process? I mean, I just want to make sure the public has the ability to comment. Or at least at the beginning stages.
Of course, these things are done, the ultimate approvals are done. In public meetings. In which the planning commission does take. Comment. Trying to remember and maybe Connor Barney can help me if there's also a public hearing requirement. In here, I know we toyed around with that, yes, there is. So if you go to page, you're eight of seventeen, Carl, this would be subsection four. A concept plan has been approved, the developer submit a final plan. Planning commission shall hold at least one public hearing and considering the final plan, including the pattern book. But which the following notice, so I take subsection two to mean that sort of at the concept phase. They may require a charrette at the final stage, they they definitely would require a public hearing now, of course. That's a good example of if we're gonna have the town council do that, then maybe it's the town council who should have that. Hearing before final approval of the pattern book.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was one of my conflicting statements I was gonna point out in it, so, okay.
I would just say, as a member, a previous member of the planning commission, you know, sometimes you need a work session and sometimes you don't.
Okay.
So I would say, you know, if we put in there shall. Why you're to have it, whereas this. They will know better what what is best for.
Okay.
Particulars.
It might be too early in the process, I I agree, but then later down where it covers with the with the public hearing, I'm okay with May here.
That's fine, I was taking a judgment call too and see what people's feelings were. On that. Alright, on page nine, this is this is much quicker than the this afternoon meeting. John and Barney can confirm that, maybe this is just from my own understanding of on page nine under. Oh, I guess seven A under amendments of what. This says a material change in use is involved. I'm just trying to figure out what that material means, does that mean like hard fast, like change in brick or surfaces or something else? Or material and some other definition?
My memory is that this would be a. Change in use. Meaning they may have designated, let's say. A certain area for retail. And they want to now designate it as.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Be a material change in use. And I believe that other than the word material, I believe that. That section you're talking about already. Is code. And it probably brought about, I think. Let me just scroll up real quick.
Material to me just means like physical. Objects, I just want to make sure it's like, so it's like almost like a change in use or.
Well, material here meaning substantial change. One that's.
Maybe it should say substantial instead of material for clarity purposes. I don't know.
Making note of that, yeah.
Yeah, just go, yeah, I'm not, I don't want to get bogged down in that or this.
If you do that, I think C needs to be changed to. Substantial as well, since you have material there.
Yeah.
Since you're then then you're talking about the layout and the and the parking lot configurations, which can ultimately determine a project. And the success of it, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's just just the word use of material, as I said, just means to me a physical object.
Brick versus cinder block.
Yeah, exactly.
That's my interpretation as well.
Yeah.
And I think when we have this final draft in before the next meeting, I'll make sure that we get you guys packets, so everybody has, at least on this item. Everybody has the same packet for the same page, same item number.
Yeah.
You're not on page nine and everybody else is twelve.
Yeah, okay, on, let's just say on my page twelve is my next couple set of questions. Under permitted uses. On the copy I was reading this afternoon, it was taken out, but I got a. Not a concern with it, but just wondering why alcohol sales is. I want to say pointed out on here. Where it's not really in any other portion of the, any other zoning classifications, because. My thought would be, let's say like a liquor store or something would fall on the general retail use. Or is this trying to pick out like a specific? Type of of alcohol sales that we might think wouldn't be allowed? Also, also it needs to be reworked too, there's a there's a formatting area.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, banks need to come down to subsection C.
Yeah. So that's what I mean, I'm not, one way or the other, I'd just like to know why it's. Pointing out, because to me, I would think it would fall on the general retail.
So is the question, Carl, why alcohol sales?
What was that?
Is the question why it was added?
Curiosity question.
Yeah, it's more a curiosity question, because I mean, I went over the other section of zoning classifications, like downtown and south. It's not like bars included, but like liquors, I mean, I'm thinking when it's alcohol sales, it's liquor stores.
Right, but it it's interesting that it was added with banks. Alcohol sales and banks are allowed.
I mean, it's just, out of curiosity, I'm like, I'm trying to figure out, is maybe I'm into weeds. I'm just trying to figure out, are we trying to allow a specific type of alcohol sales?
My memory of this is that. We started out with kind of one list and. I think there were some comments that it maybe may have been too detailed, and then others. Felt that maybe wasn't detailed enough. And I think that what ended up happening was, I think that if I'm not mistaken, staff may have. Drafted some additions that or some. Categories that should be in there, was recommended to be in there. And planning commission ultimately approved this list, I think there's probably some duplicative. You know.
Yeah, wording, yeah.
Can it can it just be combined with? Subsection E, where you're talking already about. Alcohol sales or or liquor stores or whatever you want to call that, it seems like that would be the line to. If you're gonna throw breweries and distilleries and wineries. If if our focus is liquor stores, then. That covers everything else as far as alcohol sales is, I think as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm fine with it, it's just one of those weird, like to to me, it should fall on the general retail.
I think we got to be careful about general retail, because even when you're talking about general retail. I mean, I think the governor with this pandemic just said, you know, general retail is going to be closed and then. Liquor stores does not fall under that that same category. So I wouldn't want to put them together, I would feel much more comfortable just throwing it down to E and then having Tom just clarify that section. So that it it's all inclusive.
That's fine, yeah. I'm good with that. Councilman, I'm just. The curiosity reason more so than anything, sorry, I spent so much time on.
No problem.
That one go. Under. Retail sales on page thirteen. Because it was advised not to start the list of exemptions, can we, the retail sales and service. With the exception of what's included there, pawn shops. Not to knock them, but I saw that in the downtown zone classification too, that pawn shops were prohibited use.
Do you want to add pawn shops as a prohibited use?
Yeah, under retail sales and service for the for this area. I hear no real. Just one question on W beneath that, under veterinary clinic, animal hospitals. Without overnight boarding, I know probably the attention is like to stop a kennel, not a stop a kennel, but. You don't want a kennel without door runs, but what if a animal hospital needs to keep a dog or something overnight due to a medical procedure? Would that be allowed under that? Would that be classified as boarding?
I think that would be classified as boarding that.
And then would would we be eliminating a potential? I want to say client for the developer or a shop there if we do that, because I can understand a kennel run and stuff there. But if an animal needs to be kept, then a potential vet vet wouldn't open there.
I think this this is, this has been discussed before, and I think the idea was that. Outside. Boarding with with the dogs barking. With with minimal supervision, I think was the idea behind that. And if. If councilmember Munder wanted to be more specific about. No outside boarding. Then, you know, I would allow it for for the council to come up with that wording, but that when I was on, you know. When we had the other council, that was sort of the idea was to was to prevent or limit. The dogs being stored outside in a fence and allowing barking in the around the neighborhood, you know, you got to remember we're in MXD. So you might have apartments or condos right below. Or right above where where this business is, so. Kind of keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm totally cognizant of that, I don't I want to want that either, it's just that I don't so want to limit a potential. Business coming to town because of a new area, because they might have to have one. Stay, go ahead.
An agreement with Jason, if we can find some wording that allows, you know, like if a cat goes in. In the afternoon to get fixed or something and, you know, and has to stay there overnight, I mean, I'm I'm okay with that. Indoor scenario, so if we can find wording that allows that, I'd be in favor of that.
Can you put a note on that or pin in that, Tom?
I've done that.
So something like like overnight hospital stays, but not necessarily vacation boarding.
Yeah, something like that, like if say, you know, animal has a late surgery or something.
Yeah, because some animals do have to stay overnight, depending on what surgery.
Yeah.
Is performed, could I? Could we go back to retail sales, because I want to hear exactly, you know, Carl had suggested some verbiage. I wanted to hear exactly what. With.
Say again, Patty, you broke up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, it's not you, it's you, it's the connection.
Oh, I know, it hasn't been that great, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted you to state again retail sales with the additions.
Okay, I want to add to that, well, I think. Council president Hushour and you were talking, maybe not you, but with the exception of dispensaries and vape shops.
Right.
And I wasn't gonna eliminate that.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was included as well, okay.
Oh, yeah, I was, yeah, I just want to add add with the addition of pawn shops. Because. Be in everything else, there are other locations potentially for that instead of. That.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So that, moving on to page fourteen. There was discussion earlier that. At councilwoman Reed is in our reading on, she was numbered on the mine is F under density. It says the maximum of. Seven was changed to eight, which was fine, which was I think what the planning commission wanted, but decided upon. This is dwelling units per net developable acre shall be permitted. I believe it was discussed and decided upon to change that to gross developable acre. Under that to go along with the. Parts under the table earlier, and I might be incorrect on my. Understanding what happened at the planning commissions.
My understanding is that's what the developer wanted, but then ultimately, and John, Barney, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that the developer very much argued that, but that on this category here with respect to density. Even though the planning commission might have agreed to measure open space. On the gross developable acre, they wanted to keep this part. On the net developable acre consistent with the way we calculate that on other. In other zones, but John and Barney may have a different reflection of that.
I mean, does that cause us issues later down the line?
Well, my understanding is the maximum of eight dwelling units for the net developable acres is where. The developer felt he actually wanted more than that, but then we compromised from where it was, and this is a number we sort of. At the planning commission level and and the developer at the same time sort of came up with that number. And it was on the net developable acreage.
Okay, I mean, the number is fine, I agree, I just, for some reason, I thought the net was changed to gross, but if.
That was in a portion with the open space.
Okay, so if that's what came out of planning, that's fine too.
That's what they agreed to, the plant, the developer.
Okay, because as I said, I'm working from several different copies.
I understand. But yeah, I think they, everybody sort of agreed to that, the developer wanted, I think it was. Twelve or fifteen is what he wanted per acre.
Yeah, so no, I'm 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 fine with a, that helps out a lot for density. Okay, on page fifteen. Under one twelve dash sixty two, special exceptions. On my copy, it seems like the lot areas and stuff were added, I'm just wondering why. Because that seems to be existing code.
Sorry.
Excuse me, on page fifteen.
Uh huh.
Under one, section one twelve dash sixty-two under special exceptions. Under F three. Under clubs, fraternal and service organizations.
Right.
Says in R five, R seven and mixed use, which was added. That's to cover the mixed uses classification. That's fine, but then it seems like the lot sizes are being added too. Is that?
Uh.
Like lot area of twenty thousand square foot, lot area of a hundred fifty, lot width.
I believe that may be existing code. Can you just bear with me real quick?
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's coming up on mine as, as an addition, so I just wanna make.
Yeah, it's a red line that got added, but may have been just adding uh existing code to give better. Uh, more, uh, uh, more clarity. Quote, yeah.
Alright.
Just bear with me.
Oh, that, that's fine. But I'm looking down and reading. Does anyone have any questions? On this, I'm not seeing the hands rock, raise up or anything.
So two things, Carl, on the um, under the purpose of mixed use districts.
Oh, yeah, I missed that one, didn't I?
So it, it's probably around page five or six. It, it's basically the, the purpose. Did you want to request the change of verbiage where it says um, and a reduction of vehicle miles traveled?
Yes, I do. Thank you for reminding me, councilwoman. I missed that. Yes, I would like to change that to um, from vehicle miles traveled. Hold on. Yeah, to something that's saying, make it more walkable and remove vehicle miles traveled.
So, so basically the, the conversation today was, at the end of the description, it says, and a reduction of vehicle miles traveled. Um, that might have a negative connotation. Um, and it was discussed that maybe something like, but increased walkability would, would be sort of a more positive. Presentation of one of the purposes for mixed use.
And I'm okay with that, but um, I've yet to find that on a page.
Yeah, I know.
I'm looking for it.
I can't find it either. I'll, I'll try and find it real quick.
No, I remember.
I thought it was just me.
I don't think it's on revision three.
It i- it is on revision three. I saw that, I think.
Probably the start of.
Bar- Barney has something.
Are you looking on page eleven, number three? And increase in walkability?
Gotcha. It's, yeah, it's red line two.
That's the correct one, yes.
Gotcha. Yeah, buddy. Thank you, Barney. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have it marked on my pages. That's why I blew over it. Yes.
Good catch, Pam.
Yes, thank you.
The uh, back to one twelve dash sixty-two F three, that, that uh red line uh language that Carl was referring to. Is uh currently in the code, so that was not being added. I think we added a, a more full quote. Of the section, and that's why it shows in red line, but it, it is not new. It's in the code.
Gotcha. I think that is. It.
Um, so real quick, page thirteen F, right?
Pam has something I missed.
Now, so hang on, page thirteen of the new copy.
Alright.
It's hard.
That's the density of maximum of eight dwellings, units per net.
Yeah, but on the copy, copy that I have, there's no, it doesn't state eight.
Yeah, it's, that's an oversight by my part, uh corrected in this afternoon's submission, so I have down that I need to add eight.
Okay, and then I actually have one, one other request. Um allowable uses. I see that short-term rentals and Airbnbs were removed, and I know that is something that planning commission um had recommended. But, but I would ask town council to, to reconsider that and put short-term rentals and Airbnbs back in. Um, we don't have hotels in the area. It's a nice addition for incoming relatives and family or anyone that wants to visit our towns. Um, I think they get a bad rap based on um vacation areas that have Airbnbs. Uh, but I think for our community, they would be a nice addition.
You said the planning commission took that out?
Yeah.
Uh, did they, do you recall what their logic was?
Um, that it could bring some negative activity to the area, I, I believe was the main concern.
Does someone have a page that, that would have been on?
Under allowed uses, would have been page twelve on the, to this afternoon's copy, so.
Like somewhere in between twen- ten and twelve where the permitted uses.
Right, right above the veterinary clinic and animal hospital stuff group.
Gotcha, okay. What um, what's considered a short-term rental versus an Airbnb?
Hmm.
Like a one month, uh, I need, I need to rent because I sold my house and I need a place to stay for a month. Versus I need, I'm gonna come and visit and uh go around state to state and let me stay in Mount Airy for a week.
Any and all of the above, I would assume. Job transfers, um employment, vacation.
I don't, um, I actually don't necessarily have a problem with um. Uh, I think there, there needs to be some clarifying language written a bit, uh, written for the short-term rentals that I would like probably planning to go through. But I understand what an Airbnb is, so um. I don't necessarily have any arguments against those.
Would you say an Airbnb is okay, but possibly a short-term rental is not?
Um, I think I, I think I would just like some clarification that i- in the difference between the two. Um, a- and uh, I don't wanna put myself on the spot and give my own definition, um, since we're trying to come up with language that's uh. I, I think um contiguous based on what we're trying to do for MXD. Um, I would like for a team to, to figure that out. Um, but I sort of understand the meaning. I've never stayed in Airbnb, but I, I understand what they are and how they work. And I, I think uh, that would add another level of um development to uh, to our community.
So, so real, real quick, the only thing I would say to that is when you, when you say short-term rental and Airbnb. Airbnb is a brand. Um, Airbnb is a short-term rental.
So why are we classifying them as separate?
So you could just say short-term rental, right, Tom?
Yeah, I, I think the intent here probably with short-term rentals such as Airbnbs. Um, or meaning the same as, not different.
Uh, then I would, you know, if you're gonna do a, a I dot E.
Yeah, exactly.
I would be, I would be okay with that.
Yep.
So, some other council members need to, need to say something though.
Well, I have something to say. I've stayed at many Airbnbs. All the ones I say that were great.
And you're not a horrible person either.
I'm not a horrible person, not a horrible person, but when my girlfriends and I go away every year. We're usually running an Airbnb or Viva, one of those places.
Yeah.
Twice. They're, they're very nice places and they're kept up very well. But I don't know if we wanna go down that path. I mean, we have this new, new zone that we're looking at. We're looking at it from a high level. I think that the, that their perspective was that these were going to be town homes. Hopefully some single-family home in there. Um, I, I know that there's a, a rental component. If there's going to be apartments, I don't know if that's in this mix or not. But I don't know necessarily if we want to go down the path where we're going to be promoting renting properties. For the most part, because um, just as I remember being on the planning commission. And the new development that is uh slated uh for Wildwood Park. Those went from condos to apartments, and that was met with a lot of resistance. So I just remember how the residents felt about it. And so I, I'm not sure I wanna go down that path where we're going to be promoting uh people to buy properties to rent them out. Um, sporadically. I mean, it's one thing to rent something out for a year. It's another thing to rent something out for short-term. So I'm a little bit on the fence of, of that one, to be honest.
Yeah, and I would, I would admit I don't have enough information. I haven't stayed at Airbnb and I, I just need to understand it a little bit more. Especially since the planning commission for, for some reason uh decided it was, it was not a suitable use. So I would probably leave this meeting if we end up uh delaying a vote on this and, and sending some emails to some of the planning commission members to get some input.
Alright, so.
Moving on.
What, what is that, Jason? I said just.
I just said, let's move on then.
Okay, stick a pin in it. Okay, well, Pam had, got my brain function on something else that was added that wasn't in this afternoon's or this morning's meeting with her and I. At the end of this, on page thirteen. Uh, out of the um, at the end of permissible uses. It got but put back in any, I think, section or subsection of Y. Any other uses not listed above that the planning commission determines are similar to and or compatible with the commercial uses set forth above. I think councilman, council president Hushower, it kinda almost saying that someone can come in, apply to the planning commission. And if they determine. That it might be comparable use, it's allowed, they can allow it?
That's the squirrel I was chasing the other day.
Yeah.
I'm gonna find that. So where, where.
It's, it wasn't in what I was using this afternoon at this morning's meeting, but it's in what Tom sent around late afternoon.
Okay.
Page thirteen of my copy, at the end of permissible uses subsection Y. Right above the permitted uses of residential, like townhouse. It's right above the section.
Just before accessory uses and townhouse dwelling, ma- multifamilies, including apartments, right above that, should be Y. Any other use is not listed above the, that the planning commission deems or determines are similar to and or compatible with the commercial use set forth above.
I think the idea probably behind that, and I, I'll speculate, is if we try to list every single thing that we want. In our town, we're gonna have thirty pages of different types of businesses. And I think this line gives the planning commission. Um. The, the willingness to say, you know what? Even though it's not a gym per se, it sort of falls under that same classic, classification. And so uh Q, physical fitness facilities might, uh, you know, they might say, you know what, this is a gym. It, it doesn't necessarily fall under that particular idea, but it is, and so allowing that. So like, I don't know, what if they do like a ninja course? It's not a, it's not technically a gym, but I mean, you're. You're falling under that sort of same category. So I don't know. I think that, that's what the, the meaning of that for.
I think you're right, Jason. I think that is what the meaning of it is, but um, I, I would prefer that line came out. And uh, and that there was, was not a Y, so that um, so that it, it did. I almost hate bringing it up, cause every time I bring it up, people zero in on what I'm saying and, and uh, and, and it ends up a ugly conversation. But what if somewhere down the road, two or three years from now, a uh dispensary comes along, marijuana dispenser. And under, with that in here, then that decision could possibly be made by the planning commission. At the planning commission level, and, and I just don't think that's fair to the planning commission members who are a bunch of volunteers. Uh, experts in their field, but they're not accountable to the citizens like us elected officials are. A- having said that, I, I do realize that we, under retail, we actually dealt with that specifically. My question would be, uh, why don't we just take Y out of there and take, take that verbiage out of there and force them to go to the staff and get an answer? And if it's something that's outlandish, then the staff would be able to say, hey, listen, that's, that's beyond the scope of MXD. So you're gonna have to ask for text amendment, and that comes back to the council, and then we are involved in that decision, so. Uh, John, did you have something?
Well, yeah, and, and in that respects, like you're saying, ultimately, as you were saying, three, five years from now, when the project's done and there's a change of use. Um, again, is that use going back to the planning commissioner? Or is it going to the zoning administrator? And then at the zoning administrator, I'd be like, well, wait a second, this needs to be a text amendment. This has to go back to town council and go through that process. So again, I think striking it would be good, or, you know, you know, I think, you know, removing it because ultimately it would be back to staff. Uh, and it'd be part of the pattern book as well, ultimately, uh, the uses that should be going in there for approval.
Yeah, so I, personally, I would like to see Y removed, stricken from MXD to uh. Uh, to force it to some sort of a procedure that would take it to the council if it's too outlandish.
And did Barney have something to say? Cause I saw him log back in, connect to audio. Did he have?
No, I, I apologize. I, I lost connections. I had to reboot computer, everything. I don't know.
Wasn't sure. Yeah, it was like nine times out of ten, a use is gonna be, probably can fall onto something that's already allowed. As I said, it's something that outlandish that we've experienced recently, and some, not outlandish, but the change in use concerns have been prop. Has been cropping up, and I would rather have that come back to council and stuff more so than, or staff.
So um, I mean, can we, I, I would prefer that that be stricken out and they remove Y. Do you want to go down the row and see if anybody's okay with that or not?
I'm fine with it. Councilwoman Washington Ball?
There we go. I'm fine with taking it out.
Councilmember Poyer?
Um. I'm kinda on the fence of it. Um. I don't think uh, the dispensary was a good example since it falls under V.
I always uh fall down when I start. And there's no standing up from that conversation.
No, I know, I know, I know, Larry. Um, and, and I'm trying to figure out what might be. You know, you guys were using the term um, something outlandish, but I feel like the planning commission would, might say, you know what? This, this might be too outlandish that it doesn't really fall under anything, and so then it, it. Um. You know, it's not going to be accepted. Um, Tom, any background on why, where that came from? Did uh, planning uh, want to put that in or um, any, any history on that?
So I think this was an outgrowth of a number of comments, uh, probably from the developer that this zone needs to be flexible. That when they have a uh, pattern book in the plan, they're not gonna know precisely what retail use may go into a spot. You're just gonna have a plan that's just big day. Um, and I think that uh, they were pressing, the developer was pressing for. Basically not having much of a list of permitted uses, at least not as specific as we have it here and as we have it certainly in the DTZ. And other, it's our code, and instead suggested to make very general category, just say retail, just say residential of a certain variety maybe. And then if, if they're. Residential of a certain variety, maybe. And then if if there are uses that you don't want, like dispensaries or whatever. You have a separate section that says uh none of these uses will be permitted under any circumstances in the zone. So as an outgrowth of that, I think what you got was sort of a compromise between that and others who kind of wanted a a more detailed list. But I think that the planning commission at the end of the day did recommend that it have some measure of flexibility. Uh so then in case, you know, there's some use that um. Maybe, you know, ten years ago, I I might have given this example to Councilwoman Washawal. Maybe ten years ago was more of a uh a wholesale use, you know, and now it's done on a retail basis. Um. Might, you know, be more acceptable within a surrounding retail commercial type of establishment. Um, you know, probably think distilleries, for instance, today uh versus ten years ago. Um. So I I think that that the outgrowth was, hey, you know, instead of putting. Um developer through a lengthy. Although I don't necessarily think it's lengthy, but some regard as a lengthy extra text amendment. Process to add a use that's not there. Why don't we have uh this provision that gives the planning commission the right to say, look? It's uh maybe not specifically permitted, but it's certainly compatible. It's kind of along the lines. You know, it would be consistent. An appropriate use. So I think that's where all this comes from.
Alright, thank you for that history and and based on what Tom said, then I'm okay with uh removing that.
I think we're done. Uh, Councilwoman Reed, did you comment on that?
Mute Pam.
Got you muted.
I said I'm okay with removing it.
Okay. Alright, we'll take that out. Thanks. Thanks for finding that. I was looking. All over the place for it a couple of days ago. I could not find it because it wasn't in the copy I was using.
Hey bingo, exactly. And then it came to say afternoon, like, oops, it's back in.
Alright, thanks.
You're welcome. That's it then. I don't have any other. Comments or questions on this. Does anybody else?
Alright, I mean, we have significant changes in my opinion. I mean, there are significant changes. Tom was gonna do some research on. Uh if the council could have any say on the pattern book. And uh and then there were numerous things and I I'm not even convinced that we're all using the same coffee. Uh tonight, so. I would make a motion to postpone this until the July meeting. And that way it would have time to get the revisions in. We'd be able to get a clean copy. Come back in July. Hopefully have a meeting that is in a public space. And um, you know, and and it give the public a month to absorb. Uh what we've done tonight and uh and make some extra comments on it and stuff. So. Uh I would make a motion to postpone ordinance uh twenty twenty dash one.
I'll second that.
Okay, councilmember Poyer seconded. Is there any discussion on postponing? All in favor is AI?
Hi.
Okay, so we'll see this again in July. Tom, is there anything else uh technically we need to do?
Nope, I think we're good.
Okay, alright. That's a good discussion. Thanks, Carl, for uh uh taking handle of the page by page.
Oh, you're welcome. It's just, it's an important enough topic where we need to spend. A page a page on it. It's been such a long time coming too, so.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh no unfinished business. New business is the um uh Public Works Agreement for Lot Seventeen Twin Arch Business Park. Uh, John, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, this is a King Sports Construction. This is the AstroTurf. Um. Plan that went through planning commission last month and was approved for final approval. Uh, this is PWA attached to that. Uh, it's a generic PWA that Tom drafted up basically. Uh, if you have any questions specifically on the PWA. Uh, it is uh. He could probably answer it better than I, but I think, you know, there's the bonding in there that Barney estimated, I think. Correct, Barney? For um the PWA and it's it again, it's the um one that's taking the recycling, the AstroTurf. Uh and storing it on site. And I think they're actually. From my understanding is, well, that's a different, that's a different plan later, maybe. Uh, they might be expanding to a larger lot there at Twin Arch Business Park. Uh at some point. So this is. This is their PWA agreement uh that was drafted by Tom. For the final plan that was approved at planning commission last month.
Apparently standard PWA. There really isn't anything different from the usual form. Anything I probably would do in the motion is to condition. Your approval on my receipt or the town's receipt of a title certificate. Didn't see one on this and although. It may be a little. Uh belt and suspenders because we do have a provision in in the PWA itself that requires a title certificate. Usually I I request these in advance, but uh so I might recommend that uh. A motion to approve be conditioned upon my later receipt review of a title certificate.
Okay, uh based on that, I'll make a motion to approve the Public Works Agreement, Lot Seventeen, Section Four, Twin Arch Business Park. Um. Conditional on the town's receipt of a title. Is there a second on that? Uh, councilmember Washabaugh, seconds? And is there any more discussion? All in favor is AI?
Hi.
Hi.
And that is unanimous. Alright, that covers it for that. We're down to uh mayor and council reports. Uh. Uh, like I said, the mayor uh out there helping uh senior celebrate. He may still be doing it. It's ten o'clock. Let's see how that goes for him and look forward to seeing him uh next month. Uh beautification parks and rec, councilmember Munder.
Alright, I'll try and keep this brief. And even though the beautification commission has not held a meeting. Unfortunately, due to the COVID response, due to the COVID, they have been busy. Out and about in in the town, keeping the parks looking nice. Some of their most recent projects. Have been, they have weeded and pruned and planted in Best Pocket, Wildwood and Watkins. And tended to the sign at East West Park. Garden, Bryson Field Garden, Town Welcome Sign and the new Banner Sign Garden and the Train Station Garden. So they have been very busy. Making the town look even more beautiful for for spring, even though what they have done in the past. And they've expanded the new rail yard sign garden and expanded the rails to trail garden. So they have been a busy commission. In the past cou- couple of months and they appreciate all the comments that the residents have given them out while they've been out working. Of how beautiful the town looks. They're appreciative of that. So hopefully we'll be allowed, we'll be able to. Um, have an in-person meeting soon once the COVID nineteen response. Some of these restrictions are lifted. And I can forward Gina some photos that she can maybe be able to post up on the town website of what they've been doing. If anyone has a question. So. The Board of Recs, the Board of Recreation Parks is next. We have finally. Held a meeting. It was virtual on May twenty first, twenty twenty. Some of the things to take away from that is that. Excuse me, most of the things that were going on be- before, we haven't had a meeting related to grants and programs and. Trail maintenance have been continuing on more behind the scenes, particularly the boardwalk for Rails to Trails. It is moving forward, albeit slowly due to state and COVID. So it is moving just more slowly. And then. The chairman, Mike Regal, would like to say thank you to the. Town staff, I believe, that fixed the conditions of water running onto the trail over at Wendy Ridge. He indicated that he. Was like that many times and that that problem has been alleviated. Of water running over onto the trail from the nearby stream. And on some new business for park reservations. Even though we have taken some in the past, we have been calling and telling people. That the reservation is tentative, depending on what happens related to the COVID nineteen response. So. They can place, but there's no guarantee that whatever they're placing the reservation for will be allowed to happen due to government restrictions on COVID. Um. The reservations for pavilions are currently on hold. And then pickleball courts and basketball courts are open for use, excuse me, tennis courts and pickleball courts are open for definite use. Which has been allowed by the governor. Unfortunately. The town is, I believe, the last time I heard, the town has maintained keeping the basketball courts closed for games. Only I think if they want to shoot a hoop or two, that's allowed, I think, maybe can. As my undertaking, my understanding of what the town's done. I'm getting responses. So you can use the courts, just not for any games right now, unfortunately. And that is it. Our next meeting will be the third Thursday. Of. Of June, which unfortunately I don't have the date right now. Sorry about that. Hopefully it will be in person, but if not, it will be held virtually. And that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you. Uh, councilmember Munder, on to Economic Development and Planning Commission, councilmember Reed.
Yep, so a lot of my updates, we've already talked about, so I'll just go through it real quickly. Uh, planning commission met on eight, May eighteen. Ordinance twenty twenty dash four, which is a text amendment to neighborhood professional, was given a favorable recommendation to town council. Uh, we set a public hearing for that tonight. Um, King Sport, John Breeding has already touched on. Uh, the planning commission did give approval for a concept site plan for MSB Services LLC in the Twin Arch Business Park, Lot Eight, Section Four. Uh, our next meeting is Monday, June twenty ninth, seven PM. The format is to be determined. For the Economic Development Commission, we met on May twenty seventh. I am excited to announce that the Mount Aerie Small Business Operating Assistance Micro Grant now has thirty thousand dollars with. To be dispersed in one thousand dollar increments. Um, that application will open um online tomorrow. You can go to mountariemd.gov forward slash microgrant for the application information as well as the um online submission form. Um, EDC in the past was talking about a business survey. At our last meeting, we actually spoke with Wendy Rimby, the chair of the Growth Task Force. Uh, to partner with them to create a a business survey sooner than later. In light of COVID nineteen. So it's an opportunity for us to reach out to the businesses. Um, learn more about their successes and their struggles prior to COVID nineteen. As well as moving forward once we come out of this. Um, so more information to come on that. We did set a subcommittee to work with the Growth Task Force. Uh, it's myself, Chairwoman Donna Marie Needle and Commissioner Mike Van Sant. So we will probably schedule a meeting before the next EDC meeting with the Growth Task Force. Um, to sort of map out what that looks like and how we move forward with it. The next EDC meeting will be held on Wednesday, June twenty fourth, uh also at seven PM, seven PM. Um, the last thing that I want to talk about is the Mount Aerie Community Funded Small Business Grant. We have raised eighty four hundred dollars. The the application process for that opened today. Um, it is, there is a website. It is, I apologize. I. I don't have it in front of me. I apologize. Um, it it's posted on Facebook. Basically, the private fundraiser grant. Ninety percent mirrors what the town grant is. Um, we created a weighted scoring system to. To take. Liability off of the committee members, um which consists of Donna Marie Needle, the president of the chamber, the president, Amanda. Myself and one member of town staff so that we could sort of protect ourselves. So so basically how we're going to award this grant is um we will score the applications. Um. Which will give us the the most needed. And then from there, we'll dial into their actual financials to um break tiebreakers. Um, determine what the actual need is. And and we haven't set a dollar amount, so we. We actually have the opportunity um to award. More money if needed. So we're so really excited about it. This is phase one. We're hoping for a phase two. So I will keep you posted about that. And if you are interested in applying for the. Community funded grant, you can go to my Facebook page, Pamela Goldstein Reed, um which has the link to the website. And that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next we have the sanitation and recycling in Mount Aerie Sustainable Commission, councilmember Poyer.
Trash is still being picked up, so that is a good thing. Um, in all seriousness, um, we were supposed to have our um ever popular shredding event this week. And even though things were starting to lighten up, um, all shredders are sponsoring a shredding company. They canceled on us um due to COVID nineteen. Um, I got a couple of questions to see if it was still going to be on. Um, but we haven't made any progress on that, so we are just canceling the event. So please hold on to. All of your financial documents and everything else that needs to be shredded and we'll see what we can do once we get past. Um, s- some of the pandemic. Um, many of our concerns related to. Um. Recycling and and sanitation have been handled through email. So if you. If residents do have any questions or concerns, please contact town hall. And um emails are usually circulated um to to help resolve any issues with that. So we still have not had any meetings. Um, related to recycling and sanitation. And I don't want to step on anybody's toes with this. But I do want to mention that our farmer's market is this Wednesday. Um, Alice has done a wonderful job setting up. Um. Car pickup and pro- uh and orders online and those types of things. And. I'm really just sorry that it's ten o'clock at night and maybe not so many people are watching this, but maybe on a preview. But uh please head over to our farmer's market this Wednesday in the rail yard. It is open. Um, but you can order online prior to going so that you can just do a car pickup. And uh I have nothing else to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say thanks for uh bringing up the farmer's market. Greatly appreciate it. Uh, next is Water and Sewer Commission and Special Projects, and that's my call. And um we did have our our Zoom meeting for the um uh water uh Water and Sewer Commission. At the beginning of uh May. And we talked about the budget, went over that, and then we also uh talked about. Uh what was brought up at one of the emergency response team meetings about uh. In in an emergency, what would the the town's opportunity or willingness to be toward uh. Uh toward assisting people who are outside the two one seven seven one area with clean water uh if we had to do that. And. And what was concluded out of that was that, you know, at the point that we start going over our emergency response plan. Uh, that um that the Water and Sewer Commission would be supportive of being part of that conversation. And seeing if there's something that we could do to assist uh outside of our uh of our town boundaries. So. Yeah, that's kind of where that went. Uh, next meeting is in two days, is uh June third at seven, seven PM. It'll be a Zoom meeting as well. And uh. Or Special Projects go, I would just say that the Historical Society is still out there. They're staying in touch via email. Uh Larry Valet, who is one of our inductees this year in the Hall of Fame. Is still working on the train board inside the uh museum. I'm sure he's glad that there's not a bunch of little hands reaching up there and. Destroying the stuff that he's building. So he's he's an incredible model maker. And um, you know, some other things are going on as well. Uh, that, you know, hopefully we'll be able able to open. Uh sometime in the month of June or certainly in July and be able to get some people back into that. So, and that uh concludes my report. And uh now we will move down to the town administrator, uh Dave Warrington. Uh, and he comes in out of the light.
Larry.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, councilwoman Washabaugh?
Yeah, the streets and roads sort of got over.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry.
I know, it's late and mine's not really exciting, but.
Oh, you're very.
I'll make it short and sweet. I'll make it short and sweet. Okay, we had our meeting, our first Zoom meeting on May fourteenth. It went well. Reviewed all the previous issues and everything had been pretty much completed. So that was good. Um, and one of the big things that we did was we reviewed the Chick-fil-A site plan.
site plan. And it was very interesting because it's the first time that anything has technically come in front of the Streets and Roads Commission. So we were able to look at it from a perspective of the traffic patterns and, you know, how, uh, the traffic flow will be impacted. Uh, once the Chick-fil-A is actually, if, if approved, which it looks hopeful that it probably will be. Um, so that all went very well and there were some very good extensive conversations and very good suggestions. And I wanna thank, uh, Barney and I wanna take, thank, uh, John Breeding as well, because they were very helpful and they attended the meeting and they answered many of our questions. Uh, the other thing is, I would like to thank everybody who this last Friday, uh, were very patient with us as we did the motorcade through all our streets and roads of Mount Aerie. Uh, we held up some of the, the people that were on their way to various, um, various activities and work, et cetera. And everybody seemed to be very pleased, um, and happy to do so. So I wanna thank the, the residents for that. And I'd like to say, um, I, I was waiting for the budget to be approved because in the budget, there is money for a very special program that I'm excited to report I'm working on, which is hometown heroes banner. Um, and this will be banners that we're hoping to have applications where families can actually, um, recommend people and their families that they would like on a banner. And we're working on the application process. Now we're working on, uh, the banner itself, how that will look. But basically what we're hoping to do is have somewhere between thirty and sixty, more likely sixty banners of our hometown heroes. So I have recommendations for five people so far. And so we'll be opening that up to the public and we're hoping to get them up sometime this year. Uh, so I'll keep you posted on that project, but we're very excited, uh, to be recognizing hometown heroes. So with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you so much for jumping in there because I would have been texted immediately by my daughter wanting to know about the Chick-fil-A. So, uh, so I appreciate you.
Good, good, good. I'm glad I raised my hand.
Thank you. And, uh, okay. So now we're down to the town administrators' report, uh, Dave, David Warrington.
And mine is short and sweet, just that we're now working on a process to try to start phase one, so to speak, of bringing folks back to the office and into town hall and trying to set up some protocols. I know, uh, council president, that you mentioned the July meeting, we actually did a little test of how many chairs we could set up to try to do social distancing. So we're trying to work on some of those things. And that's where our focus is right now. Everything else is functioning as normal, uh, just from different locations throughout the area.
Okay. Is there any, uh, consideration? I know we have a month, but a consideration that we, we may want to rent an off-site location that might be bigger, like the fire hall or, or, uh, something?
It's a consideration. Um, I think that the problem comes with, uh, telecasting or cable casting. Uh, the logistics get a little difficult. Um, so maybe, maybe we take a, a small step in July, see how it works. Uh, but we're gonna try to put protocols in place, temp, taking temperatures and things like that. So it's, it's anything but normal, but, uh, we're gonna try to see how that goes. And maybe if we find that it just doesn't work in the space we have initially, uh, we can start gearing up to go somewhere else.
Right. Thank you, uh, very much, David. So, uh, next is the, uh, town attorney report, uh, Tom McCarron.
Uh, over the last month, worked on the M X D ordinance, as well as the other ordinances on, on the agenda, the P W A, a little bit on the micro grant, uh, uh, program. Um, also have helped out the Ma- uh, Mountain Area Police Department on a few document requests they've gotten regarding some of their investigations and, uh, continue to provide advice, uh, as requested, uh, regarding, uh, uh, the reopening and, uh, of the state and interpretation of the governor's orders and other issues concerning COVID nineteen. That's my report.
All right. Uh, thank you. And, uh, nothing that requires a closed meeting tonight?
No.
All right. And, uh, everyone has access to a code enforcement report. All you gotta do is send an email to David or Matt Betts. And you can get a look at that. And I believe that, uh, takes us all the way down to the end of the agenda with one last, last thing to do. So, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay. Uh, councilwoman Washabout has made that motion. Is there a second?
Awesome.
Okay. Uh, council, councilmember Poyers was, huh, uh, pen was faster than Carl's hand. All right. Uh, no discussion on that. And, uh, we'll do a roll call, councilwoman Washabout.
Aye.
Okay. And councilmember Poyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed, uh, council, yes, member Reed. And councilmember Munder?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well as council president, Larry Hushare. So that concludes the meeting. Thank you so much. We will see you in July.
Thank you.
Thank you.